Yeah, we're gonna do that. I think it's like. It's just. Yes. Yes. We're gonna do that. So. And now. We're just gonna. I'm just. 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 I don't even know why this is. They have to start a new system. This is. We don't have. We don't have. We don't have. All of this is. 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 This is the one that I think was recent. I've been to some of the places also. I've set the rates. I've been to some of the places. 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 It's essentially just one of each other. I would. 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 He's just gonna be something. He could turn this into a place. He could leave and maybe he can try to. 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 We have any regulation right now. We're like the top of the act. We're like sixty days. We're like twenty 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 days. I don't have our duties at all for. 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 So since this is like in a romantic process, something is going on. So just respond just as soon as you can. You know, it's so scary. I mean, go back. See. You know. It's like. 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 We'll go to the next year. That's okay. No, whatever. No. We're just gonna talk to you. But. Um. Can you hear me on this one? Just. Can you hear me on this one? No. Yeah. Okay. I'll stop now. Hopefully you'll be up here. We wanted to call our city council meeting to order. Today is Thursday, April the fourth. I am sure you're being on my the mayor and we're happy to have you all here. We may have more come. We have a work meeting ahead of time and so hopefully more will be coming back in. We appreciate having Teresa here with us tonight, our financial manager. Teresa Chadd Morgan is building our state quarter is at conference. And so thank you Teresa for building it. We're going to go ahead and have our opening ceremony. First, we will have a pledge of allegiance by council member Fowers. Then we will have our reverence by council member Marigold.
Okay, would you all please stand and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear father in heaven, we're grateful for the beautiful day that we have and for the ability to meet freely and to have a good conversation. We ask you to be with us this day that we can do the right thing for the city and that we can help and listen to others and make good decisions. We're grateful for the good rains that we've had and for the weather that we've had. We ask for you to be with us that we may have peaceful night and that things may go well and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
First off, I would just like to thank everyone that helped and participated with our hop in the park that we had. We want to thank our city staff that came and helped. We have our community events coordinator Erin Mann that helped and we have our youth council. So one thing I just wanted to let you be aware of, last time we announced a month ago that we had a new youth council advisor. And after these two days she had some other family obligations that it goes that she's no longer able to do that. So we have new youth council advisors and so it's going to be Shay Call. She was here, but I think she probably stood in the other room and Cindy Bennett. So we appreciate them being willing to volunteer their time to do that. We have a couple of upcoming events I just wanted to make you aware of. We have our spring cleanup that's going to be held on Saturday, April twentieth. It will be here from eight AM till one o'clock PM. There will be dumpsters available. Hopefully you still have your newsletters. So it gives you all that there are some restrictions as far as a few things that we had. So hopefully everybody will follow that. And then we have our emergency preparedness there that we have that will be coming up on May eighteenth from ten until two o'clock. We'll be watching. We'll have more information on that as well as we will be having another emergency preparedness meeting this month. And so watch social media. We'll be posting that date and time as well. So we're really happy to have this chief guard with us tonight. So he's going to make an announcement for us and an introduction and then we'll go. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. Thanks for having us out tonight. For those who don't know me, I don't get out of the office much anymore. I'm Josh Guard. I'm the chief deputy over the enforcement division. I hate to see Reed a lot and council member Marigold on our huddle calls. So thank you for that. We've had some organizational changes in the sheriff's office recently where we've had to shuffle and move some lieutenants. A lot of this is because of House Bill eighty-four. So many House bills and numbers I get confused sometimes. It stems from House Bill sixty-one last year with the school security changes that Representative Wilcox introduced. It kind of tightened it up with House Bill eighty-four this year. So the county, if you don't know, is tasked with naming a county security chief that reports to the state security chief. That state security chief has been named and we needed to name a county security chief. And looking at that, Weaver County has fifty-two schools and I'm not sure if that includes the two new ones. So it could be fifty-four that that county security chief would be in charge of and have to work closely with. As we identified that, we saw the need for that to be a lieutenant position. So we had to create a lieutenant position. And with that, we moved some lieutenants around. So the county security chief, just so you know, will be Lieutenant Colby Ryan. He'll be handling all the school functions within the county. You may see him out here. He's got kind of a heavy lift. Lieutenant Jeffries, and I failed to do this in West Haven, but has done an outstanding job. He's been here three years. We got promoted together as lieutenants over three years ago. Fantastic job in Hooker, fantastic job in West Haven. He's just been a really good precinct commander out here. He's moving on to greener pastures that he's super excited about. He's going to be our new internal affairs lieutenant. So he, it's kind of a good gig. He has nobody beneath him. He doesn't have to do performance evaluations, but he has to answer to the three chiefs and the sheriff. So it'll be fun and exciting for him. And with that, we promoted a brand new lieutenant. He's here tonight. I'll let him do some introductions on himself. It's Terrence Leyman. He is currently, until next Saturday, our investigation sergeant. Has been that for three years. Saturday, the thirteenth officially because of the pay period on Saturday, he'll move to lieutenant and he'll be the West Haven Hooker precinct commander. So Lieutenant Leyman.
Good evening. How are you? My chief guard said I'm currently over the investigations division. I've got twenty-four years with the Weaver County Sheriff's Office, detective SWAT firearms, search and rescue, couple of other things. Back in the day, Curtis and I used to run around West Haven Hooker as the area cars doing all that. So I'm excited to start and start working with you guys and hopefully I can beat up the, it sounds like the big shoes. Jeffries is leading the high country. So nice to meet all of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nice to have you. And we just want to give just our heartfelt thanks to Lieutenant Jeffries. It's just been our pleasure to have him with us. He's just been incredible. So we wish you well and may we see you probably periodically. So thank you.
Thank you.
Round of applause.
Thank you for being here with us. Thank you. We look forward to being in and having you there. Okay, so next on our agenda are public comments. If anyone has any comments they would like to make, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and you will have three minutes. Seeing no public comments, we will move on. Our first consent item is our approval of our minutes that are dated March seventh, twenty twenty-four. Hopefully everyone has had a chance to look through those. Any questions, corrections, anything on our minutes?
They look good to me. So I'll make motion. We approve the minutes for what date was that?
March seventh.
March seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Fowers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second was made by council member Bocock. Is any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Like motion carries. Okay, so we have a few discussion items and some presentations we want to talk about tonight. So when we go through this council, hopefully we can have a good discussion. We won't be making any motions on any of these. These are just a discussion. It has been brought to city staff attention that we have several businesses in Hooker that are located in residential zoning areas that do not have business licenses. And so their businesses do not currently fit with our current ordinances. So some discussion we need to have tonight because we're not sure. Hopefully get some great input and then we can report with this what we want to do. Some possible things I thought of. Do we need to look at allowing maybe some of these businesses? And for example, it might necessarily be, and I'm not calling out any specifics, but just for an example, it could be someone might have a plumbing business. And so then they have like ten of their trucks that are parked there. Or for example, there could be some semis that are parked in a residential area. Some of those type things. So do we need to look at possibly having some conditional use permits for that business while they're at that location? And maybe specific to that business at the time? Do we want to maybe look at in the future creating some type of industrial zoning or something that we can have these businesses or not allow? Specific businesses in residential zoning. We currently have quite a few concerns that we've given to our code enforcer that she will be looking at of these businesses that are. We see them occurring more and more often down in the western part of Hooker. They will come and they'll purchase a home that's in residential and then we see a business. So discussion thoughts?
I think if they have a business, it's not fair that someone has purchased a business license in front of them. So first step is yeah, they should have a business license if they operate a business in the same. As far as the other things you're talking about, that's, that's when you open up a whole Pandora's box of things, I guess. I don't know. First step is yes, we should have a business license. Yeah. I agree.
Do you think there's certain criteria they need to fit? Because some of these maybe don't fit within a residential. That's been.
They have equipment. It's like if they have equipment and different things that are on, have them a job or in the way a lot of things, then maybe you have a kind that you have a permit, a business license, whatever, that allows that at that place.
But then again, you know, they're, they're doing commercial business basically in a residential area. It's not so.
No, I think that's one thing we have to examine. Sometimes if there's a little difference in actually doing the business right at the home, like if they're selling something at the home.
Or store. That's terrible.
But, but it's a little different if they go out and get in a plumbing truck, you know, a truck they do their work and then they leave and go somewhere else and just bring one truck home to park.
Yeah.
So you know, I think I would recommend, this isn't going to be something that can just be fixed with a discussion we have here. This is something maybe we ought to put together a group, whether some of members of the council would be willing to spearhead this and go through the ordinance and just see where it needs to be updated or some things changed.
I think you've got some pretty good regulations in your ordinance about what they can do in a whole business. And if they're not doing that, then they, they need to decide.
Then something, right.
Yeah. That's pretty clear. Well, so at last planning commission, this came up because there's some residents saying, okay, but this is going on and we don't really ever do anything about it. You know, we might go give them a warning, then it continues and then maybe they move all their equipment or timing. So you know, they, they said we'd somehow we need to come up with something that maybe has a little more teeth in our ordinance as well. Because I'm, I'm not saying we should discourage businesses, but, but they need to somehow fit within our ordinance. You know, I just really feel strongly that we need to follow our ordinances. So you know, maybe like you say, we need to look at that ordinance. Maybe there's a change we need to make if we feel like there is, some changes we need to make. So I think, I think, I think that's getting, you know, I mean, us getting together and discussing it and figuring out the, you know, our ordinance and what we can do with it. But I, I, you know, the zoning and stuff in our ordinance, I mean, it's pretty, very.
It might be just that you're not, not really effectively using the ordinance in the situation you're talking about. So if you want to have a couple of city council members and we could have Brandon or me go with you and go through the ordinance and look at it specifically, that group couldn't take any action. It'd have to be here, but they could certainly recommend that there be a citation issued. If you might want to give a warning and then if they don't comply, they issue a citation and then they go to court and they have to pay a fine.
And if it really is clear, if we go through that and it's clear, then we need to start enforcing. I couldn't be more into that.
Yeah.
And if it is an actual business, if you've got people selling things from their home and customers coming, probably needs to be in a commercial zone.
I think the one area though that would say like a contractor, so I, when I did landscaping, I had a business office in Sunset and I would bring my stuff home at night off in the market in my house.
Yeah, I understand that.
And, and yeah, I did offer to do business out of my home as far as, you know, bank and working stuff. But my main was in a different city. So and I know there's a lot of contractors out here. So that's, that's an area I think. But um, I don't know. You'd be careful of parts like that.
I think if they're, I think they're parking their other trucks and I think there's multiple trucks and stuff being parked at their house and passing. Yeah, well, that's been a concern is we do allow for home businesses. Some of these feel like they are taking it a little above and beyond, like you mentioned, the hairline, above and beyond what a home business is. You know, when you go ahead and resting, taking out a little field trip and pointing me out to about eight different places that definitely look like it should have been probably in a commercial zone. So that probably is something that instead of you get a couple of people together in a committee and then kind of look at our ordinance and see if there's some changes we need to make with that. Any other discussion on that?
If we want to decide right now, we just want to.
Yeah, because we can only have two.
They don't want more than two.
Yeah. Then they would be considered a corner. So is there two of you that would be interested in?
I'd be on that. I'd be willing.
I can, I can help, but.
I'd, I'd be willing to be involved with that.
Okay.
This is whoever. I guess that depends on where, who I would go.
We can still give you feedback.
Make two people.
Sure.
They're too many tired people.
There you go.
Okay, so tell them Debbie then, do you want to, your hands down?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think, I know this is a concern with some of the residents because that was displayed at our last, like I say, planning commission meeting. So I think it really is something that we need to look at. So any other discussion on this? Okay, well then we'll let them go through that ordinance. Now we'll probably have something later on in the meeting to discuss with that. So, okay, the next thing on the agenda is city property and motorized vehicles. So we currently have two locations on Hooker City owned properties where we also have received complaints, motorized vehicles, specifically motorcycles are riding on Hooker City owned property. One of those is the corner at fifty-nine hundred west and fifty-one hundred south. The other one is fifty-five hundred west and fifty-one hundred south. And so again, I thought it would be good to have a discussion, possibilities of what we want to do with this. There have been signs that have been placed and then the signs get taken down. So signs are replaced. Some concerns we've had here is as far as liability because it is city owned property. And so those are some concerns. So I thought we need to discuss, is this something we want to put a fence around the area? If we want to look at maybe doing something with the ground? Do we want to create a kind of safe environment for riders? Thoughts? What?
Well, my thought right out of the gate is obey the sign. We make sure there's signs up and I, you know, I know there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of parents that want to see their kids out doing things and riding motorcycles. But the liability, all, all it's going to take is just, we've been really lucky that none of it's really been heard on this property. But if the signs are clear, then we just make sure they're up and they're red and gold and then they get cited.
Sounds like a law enforcement issue. What do you suggest?
We just need to know when it's happening. You've called us before and you're out there wrote citations and dealt with them, all that, on the trails. You've called us before and you're out there wrote citations and dealt with all that on the trails. You know, to make more of an effort to, to watch that a week or so, you know, get that call and then we'll get Debbie's out there to, to handle it.
I've noticed that the signs are on this, um, fifty-nine hundred count. They're going over to the school, they're riding around at the school.
The thing is, they're breaking the law to get there. I mean, if these are young kids riding motorcycles to get to these places, so. I think we just need to be more vigilant and if it is something that, that is down the road ways, but maybe the city would have to provide some, we wouldn't have to, maybe they'll need a facility somewhere. That's, motor track is just a pretty big deal.
For the kids, the, the parents that seem to think that behavior's okay, maybe they, uh, find an alternative area that's more suitable for that. Cause yeah, just, yeah, it's fine with this amount, this city has viability. Should obey the law. Who's, sort of, the signs up right now or are they down?
They're up, they, they, we put them up, it wasn't about the law.
Do they just knock them over to see if...
No, they're pretty, they're pretty much gone, like the holes are still there, the actual signs, they, they, yeah, they're taken off.
You hear a VIPS program?
Then they're still there. Well, I, that was my thinking too, but I wanted to discuss with city council. So we will do that, we can, now we'll be informing you where those places are and again, if we see them riding, because usually they are riding on vehicles that should not be on public roads anyway. And like you say, I, I agree, maybe sometime that could be something that we could look into is having something that they can ride on.
So would the VIPS people be able to step out of the car and tell kids to get off the property? Is that, is that beyond their ability?
I think it's not in contact, but they can't take any action.
Certainly don't arrest.
No. To like educate them on the, on the law, but not be able to, or notify the deputy they actually see it, so they get more ghosts out here. And they can notify dispatch that somewhere now and deal with it. No, they don't have to, you know, contain or do anything like that.
Well, with warm weather, we're going to start seeing it more and more again. You know, we had, had a decrease through the winter, but now it's warm weather and they want somewhere to ride and so. Okay, so we'll just notify staff to them, we're keeping our, the signs up, we'll make sure they stay up even if that was a regular control that, make sure and then we'll notify you if we see ones that are there. Any, and if anybody's interested in the VIPS program, being part of it or curious about it, there are some flyers on your way out, you can, we can pull them and, um, we're trying to get that together so that we can keep the city a little more, you know, patrolled with citizens, so that we can be part of the, part of the good part. I guess, you probably, part of the city. Okay, thank you, Debbie. Okay, so any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll move on to our next discussion item, which this could even possibly be a motion. So, one thing that we, most people are aware of is our trees have died down at Hooper Cemetery with one lone surviving bush slash tree, I don't even think it qualifies as a tree, but someone. Um, so we had a little bit of talk about possibly doing something about getting some more trees planted down at Hooper Cemetery. And those people that, you know, had those graves on there really appreciated those trees. And so just a little bit of background on, on what you're seeing here. Um, Country Gardens, that's there in West Keven, which is a nursery, they actually have employed a multi-arborist. And so I stuck in there to ask for some thoughts that she had about possibly what we could end up planting there that maybe would work back in the cemetery. One thing she's mentioned is that she would want to go and do some soil testing where those trees were to make sure that it's wasn't, I mean, and those trees were old, they were diagnosed with having a bark beetle. The city actually paid and had them sprayed three different times. They still didn't survive, but she said she would want to go and do some kind of soil testing to make sure there's a lot of fungus or something before we did replace trees along that place. And so she, like, we took a map with some diagrams with some measurements and she kind of went through and planned a possibility of some trees that we could do. Not saying that this is anything that we would do this year, but just kind of some ideas. She mentioned doing along the front, she has a key there, but along the front doing some decorative trees. And you'll see there she has like the, there would be the flowering cherry, the flowering crab apple, flowering plum. She said a lot of people out here in Hooper have flowering, um, oh, my eyes look like, pear. But she said pear really don't last as good out here in Hooper as you would think. But even possibly getting some flowerings done. Now, that part where you see the orange and the yellow, that's the east side of the cemetery, which I think in the future we would want to get some trees in there so they can grow before. This would even, you know, we would name the shade there. That what first brought this to my mind is I had a resident, well, not even a resident of Hooper, um, but someone who asked their spouse buried in the Hooper Cemetery and said they would be interested in donating some trees. And so I, um, talked to Debbie a little bit about this, about possibly doing an Arbor Day where we could, the city, we could see about possibly purchasing a few trees. This year this could be an ongoing project. We could see if maybe residents would be interested in purchasing a tree. They wouldn't necessarily, and I'm not saying we have to go through this, um, through Country Gardens. They were the ones that just had some expertise on this to help and there's others as well about planting some trees. Um, you know, sometimes too, you can do, people will do them and do a little memorial. We could do a little plaque if they want to donate a tree that you could put even in the front of it, it was donated in memory of. She suggested on the flowering ones, you put it on the ground. If we do some of the larger ones, and I had a picture here, now I can't find it, that she showed me that, that bigger trees, that if we replace them, and I don't know whether, no, I did, I lost my picture, but they have roots that go straight down and then out. And so as tall as the tree gets is as deep as the roots get. Part of the problem we had with the trees in the cemetery before, well, besides the fact that they, I don't remember them ever knocking there, so they've been there for multiple decades, but they were pine trees, their roots tenderage, they do get bark beetle and then, so they don't have a very, like you said, they're shallow, very deep root. And we need something with a deep root to be planted in the cemetery. So, um, discussion, then if you think this might be a good idea, we can possibly have a motion to do an Arbor Day or in connection maybe even of the Earth Day. Just some thoughts about possibly getting some trees back planted in our cemetery. One good thing about the front, there's very few graves along the, so if you go up to the top, it's the west side, right by Rachel twenty-six, very few lots have been sold there. The part of the south straight down from there, we did, um, it was a couple of years ago, they did, um, an improvement across the front with crew and gutter. So they added on a few lots that haven't been sold either, so there would be room now for some trees there. The rest of our cemetery is pretty much filled out as far as the older part of our cemetery. So there's really not, where it says key and down beyond, there's really not any room to put any trees there because you're gonna be interrupting graves, I mean, there's really not room. So, discussion, thoughts about this?
The one, the one thing, um, I was thinking about is new trees won't survive the sprinkler. They would have to be, some water for soap. So that would be, that would be high consuming. So, I mean, we would need to figure out how much more of an effort that would be for them to do that. Because I, I realize that when we get new trees, we have to, we have to sort them out.
So, uh, yeah. One thing that I could ask from another cemetery, what they did with this? And they said they made sure that the trees were planted right next to a sprinkler head. So they were the first thing that ever received the water was the tree. But those are really good points about, about asking to do something.
So, have you talked to Jared about this?
Yes.
They, they, because your sprinkler line probably runs right along the cultural line. So it could compete with, you know, the trajectory of that, your sprinkler on other parts. So I mean, that's, I'm just saying that's something to think about.
We might want to look at the sprinkler lines. Yeah, the sprinkler lines and, and see that we're getting good watering on all the trees. Because we might have some that are getting great water, some of them are just getting, so. Yeah, and they would be kept alive, so. I, I would think that we could maybe table it and, um, look a little more into some of that stuff and then bring it back to the session.
One thing when I did talk to, um, the park staff, they said any tree planting in the cemetery needs to be had by the city council. So that's, that's why I wanted to bring it to the city council. And, and I think, I think that's mine too. I think this, I think, well, we've had a few concerns about, oh, we, you know, we really miss the trees. And so I think before we sell all those graves, this would be a good time to get some trees planted if we wanted to do, especially with some ornamental. You know, she kind of went through and said, oh, these bloom at all different times, so it would really be beautiful and anyway, she knows more than... Yeah. Well, um...
Well, I think we're doing more planting. I mean, I, I think this is something that has to be planted, especially the type of trees. I think if you're putting, you know, leaf bearing trees, that's gonna, every fall, what kind of mess are they going to leave? Some trees, the branches that grow out, you take down trees and they're fine, every time you get a wind that comes through, you have a lot of branches to deal with as well as leaves in the fall. So I, you know, I think, uh, it's always, landscape's always beautiful, running around a cemetery, it may be more planting than what we decided here tonight.
I could do a little more discussion.
So, I think you, um, acquired an arborist, I think you probably ought to acquire like a certified irrigation designer. Just say, hey, this is what I'm planning on doing, water irrigation, what do we need to do? I don't know what that would cause, but I mean, actions would be one, but I, I don't want to do that. But, um, but somebody with that expertise probably ought to look at it.
First, we're just gonna have to check.
What's large areas?
Yeah. And, and, you know, when it was designed, you know, there's different designing now. Now, when there was, when it was putting, so there might be a little bit of tweaks they could do to it or add line up short or like that. Why should we, um, does someone want to make a motion about possibly tableing this? In the meantime, we, so just a way of information, we won't be having a city council meeting in two weeks, April eighteenth, because we will be attending a conference down in St. George. So our next meeting won't be until May second, I believe, is that the right date, Brian? So, does someone would like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, table this for further discussion until it's...
Okay, so we have had a motion by council member Marigoni. To table this motion, we have a second by council member Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion heard. Okay, now we have three items that we are going to have public hearings on. And so if this is all right, I was going to catch your head of time, can we discuss this a little bit and open up the public hearing? And then we'll have all three public hearings and then we'll close it back. So we have three different things then for our public hearings. The first one then is the title X, accessory dwelling unit review. And this is one that we've been talking about previously, um, it was in the packet, I don't know, Brian, if we have...
I didn't get it on there, no.
That's okay, that's okay. This is something that it was, um, planning commission made some recommendations. When they brought this before and we had a discussion on it, but we didn't have a motion on it, there was a couple of things that came up as far as the accessory dwelling unit review. And one of those was, it says in, that would be in the ordinance if we created the way that it is written, that at any time, so there is the, the primary residence, there is the ADU, and someone that owns those has to be living in one of them. One thing that came up last time, there could be some instances where that might not be the case. For example, someone might lead to serve an LDS mission and so there could be a time of eighteen months when their, someone, the owner is not living in one of those. There could be some active duty military service where someone might be gone for a period of time. So when we discussed this last time, um, and Brandon recommended that we need to come up with some specifics that we want to have in our ordinance that might allow for some of those, um, exceptions. So whether that we possibly, we have a form they can come in and fill out at the office that says we are going to be gone for this length of time. So for that period of time, there will not be an owner living in one of those. But that is something that we need to come up with and so, I don't know if you want to discuss that now? Are you thinking about it and we'll move on and then we can discuss that after the public hearing? If you want that, all right, if you're thinking of that, then okay. And the next thing then is...
Probably best to do the public hearing on a one or two times.
One or two times, should we do that? Okay, so then we need to have a motion made to take our regular meeting to a public hearing.
I'll make a motion when we take our regular meeting to a public hearing at this time.
Awesome. Okay, that motion was made by council member Will Cox, it was seconded by council member Mary, Marigoni. All in favor and moving to a public hearing, so. So now this is a public hearing. Um, if you want to have something to say, you have three minutes. Again, you come up to the microphone and state your name and your address. Okay, seeing no comments then for our, our public hearing, we need to have a motion to, to move from our public hearing back into our regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to move from our public hearing back into our regular meeting.
Okay, we've had a motion made by council member Will Cox to move back into our regular meeting, and so a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second was made by council member Bowers, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, so let's, we will have a discussion then from the council on this.
So, um, because there are so many different reasons that you could put them on here, I think just, um, if, that having the form for them to come go out is, is reasonable and takes care of the individual.
We, we do need to adopt this, but I don't know if we want to adopt it with just that exception or we need to, to bone on what those exceptions are going to be and then...
I'm a little afraid if we have it so specific, that's, that you don't have an objection, so I think that's...
I like just the word, like you said. And this, and probably what you have isn't the entire, did you have the entire? But I have in the packet, which is a simple paragraph.
So, so what are you suggesting, that the accessory dwelling definition in the definition section be amended to read differently? What, what do you think?
I think that was supposed to be added. Right, because I don't, I don't know if that's something we would want to read here.
Yeah, I don't know, you have public comments if they don't know what you're suggesting.
Right, so, I mean, I'm willing to read just what the commission has read and this might take me thirty minutes. For the duration of time, that either the primary residence or the detached accessory dwelling unit is being rented. The dwelling not being rented must be occupied by the owner of the property. Proof of occupancy must be provided for the city annually. The city may require proof of occupancy at any time, at any point in time. In the event of a violation of this requirement, a fine may be issued and/or the property owner charged with a misdemeanor. All applicants applying for an ADU permit shall sign an agreement acknowledging and agreeing to this ordinance. If at some point in time the property is sold, the do, the new owner will be required to sign an agreement with the city acknowledging and agreeing to this ordinance. So that's the latest that they've recommended.
Yeah, yeah, there's more than that, there's...
So I can...
So if you're wanting the exception, then you need to add that too as well, isn't it?
So, you know, and then the commission just said ideally, ideally the city would have this property kind of flagged in some type of system to know that there is an ADU there and then if any new owner comes in and has purchased this real estate, then they would have to sign up. As they sign up for utilities, they would also be aware there's an ADU and there is an ordinance that governs that ADU.
And then are you wanting to have, you can make an application for an exception, but if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have to have some body, this body or planning commission that either approves or disapproves.
Sure.
So...
I don't know how we would ever put in an ordinance all the types of requests that would be made. So it would almost have to be a case by case type of request, it would seem to me.
So they, so they would come into the city, just fill out a form, then that could be, come before us as an, as a body that could be voted upon to give them, which I...
Yeah, some body, either this body or...
We only have two, this...
Right, right. So, and then that by, by definition kind of creates a, we call it legal precedent, but it kind of creates that as you make those decisions. If someone comes in and you decide, okay, they've gone on a mission, so it's okay, that's kind of then the rule for anybody else that's the same thing. You can't treat two people differently that have the same, uh, same exception. So it would be nice to have some kind of guidelines as to how you make those decisions. It shouldn't be, I like this guy, he can have it, I don't like this guy, he can't have it.
But to, uh, put this into the ordinance tonight, to make that motion, that other part can be worked on, right? I mean, that's not something, these different exceptions, I mean, that, that's something, but then again, I actually don't know how you would come up with exceptions without creating a precedence, just like you mentioned.
Well, you always do.
There always will be a precedence.
And maybe what you do is come up with some guidelines that aren't necessarily in the ordinance. You don't want to, two page ordinance.
No, isn't there something called the reasonable man rule or something like that? What reasonable person would do?
Yeah, there certainly is that. And you're gonna have some that are gonna, gonna be hard. Um, they may be saying, well, we're gonna, uh, move to Europe for two years, we want an exception. Giving it to somebody that goes on a mission, we're going over there because we want to be humanitarian servants. So you're gonna have all sorts of possibilities. But, but ultimately what has to happen, of course, is, uh, the actual definition section of your city ordinance needs to be amended with this language and the added language on, there's appeal passes. And so that would need to, uh, be put into ordinance form and then passed the ordinance.
Should we wait and...
No, I think you've had the public hearing and if, if that's the direction you want, if you want this along with an exception system set up, then we'll put something together. Is that the consensus of everyone?
So we can motion on what, add it, is that correct?
Yeah, you can do that with, with the added provision, you want an exception provision added.
Would you want to do that tonight necessarily?
Well, you're gonna have to pass the ordinance at some point. Well, you're going to have to pass the ordinance at some point.
Well, I can order it, if it's not agreeing.
It's going to come back to you. So you can do it today and, or you can do it when it comes back.
So if we make the motion, try and passes, then you'll go ahead and add that language into it.
Yeah, you still have to pass it because you have seen the language, it tells that.
Yes, yes. So someone would be making the motion then, that we want...
So maybe the motion would be, make a motion, we draft a formal ordinance incorporating this along with, with the exception provisions and have that ready for you at your next meeting.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
Well, I would make the motion that we add this language into, I've got a list here under title ten, the accessory dwelling unit, as was read.
With the exception provision added. Except for ten.
With an exception provision added.
And they didn't, so it'll be a formal draft of a formal ordinance that we can agree on.
An ordinance, needs to be in ordinance form, so you can put a number on it and have it...
Okay, so a motion was made by Councilmember Fowers. It was seconded by Councilmember Marigoni. Any question, discussion on the motion that was made? Because this is a public hearing, we need to do this by roll call vote. Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Rokop?
Ayes.
Can someone send me a copy of whatever it is?
Yeah, so I didn't have that either, mine is short, so...
Well, we can't carry it to you right now. That would be alright too.
Okay, so our second public hearing then is on our ordinance, HCC 114, which is voting procedures and quorum requirements. And we're also going to have a public hearing on this. Just a little bit of a background. It was made aware that in our municipal code that it states that the voting procedures and quorum requirements, that the city must have four favorable votes. So previously, years ago, the city actually had seven city council members. And so there had to be four favorable votes. We do not currently have that. We have a council of six with my something, a non-voting member. And so in order to have it passed, we have to have three favorable votes. And so we need to move this into public hearing. So is there someone that would like to make the motion to this sort of public hearing? I'll make the motion in the, um, council meeting, public hearing. The motion was made by Councilmember Northrup. Second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by Councilmember Rokop. All in favor?
Aye.
So we are now moving into a public hearing. Is there any public comment on these voting procedures and quorum?
So the, the change would be just a one letter change.
Yep, just a one letter, from four to three. There was one other thing that I had a question about, where it says, "Members may excuse themselves from voting on an issue for conflict of interest." That wording makes it sound like they can still vote. And without dislocating.
So let me, let me address that a little bit. You're right, exactly, that is what it says. But if you go to the next section, it talks about F concerns. It makes it pretty clear that they're required by your ordinance to declare any conflict. And if they're not sure whether it's a conflict that would prevent them from voting, your body would make that decision. So you do have a mechanism there, it's just not in that section.
But if we made that word change, is that what you're referring to? If it said, it says, "Members may," what if you changed that to, "Members shall"? Like they're, they're required to excuse themselves if they have conflict of interest.
Well, and then that, of course, depends on maybe what the conflict of interest is. If it's a conflict of interest and they're going to make money from whatever's being discussed, that's one thing. If they are neighbors to the person that's making the request, is that conflict of interest sufficient to make them not, not vote? So it might be good to leave it a little bit flexible so that you can decide. And if they try to vote when the council feels they shouldn't, you can stop them. But if it is a conflict of interest, if it's your, if it's your son here making the request, that may not be a conflict of interest, or it may, depending on whether you actually benefit or not. So I guess there are enough situations there that I, I'd hate to, to make a hard and fast rule and define exactly what it means to have a conflict of interest. I'm not sure we can do that.
So, so the next section, because I was...
So, so yeah, read the next section before the next meeting. And if you feel with that, we still need to go back and amend this, we can certainly do that before you finally pass the ordinance.
I've got a couple of areas that, as I read through this, and where it says C, let's see. I can go down to, I think it's A. Ten dash five, or A. It says, "The planning commission recommendation will be submitted and considered by the city council at the next available meeting." I think maybe put something like following, uh, the, the...
Subsequent meeting?
Yeah, subsequent meetings, not, not the next available, because sometimes that's not a word. Or after maybe the public notice hearing requirements. So if the, if the next meeting they would do this, once the public notice hearing, or five minutes. I hope that makes sense. Is that under the zoning, or is that under, that's under this part? Yeah, that's under zoning, some get ahead of themselves.
I'm looking at my, this is the next one, sorry. It does make sense though, because if you have a planning commission on the second, second Wednesday or second Thursday and a council meeting next, there's no way you can do it.
Yeah, sorry, I got a headline, so that...
Okay, we already made the motion to go to a public hearing. Is there any comment on this as far as the voting procedures and quorum requirements?
My name is Dylan Robinson, 3223 South, 5100 West. I would question why we're moving the number and not the verbiage to be something more along the lines of more than majority. And that way it doesn't need to be changed in the future if the number of council members does change. So instead of saying three or four, depending on the number just making it so the verbiage would essentially account for that.
Okay, thank you. Do you have an answer on that?
Well, it's a, it's, it's just, the process of changing the number on the council is not an easy process. To do that, you've got to do a significant change in your ordinance. And at that time, all those numbers should have changed. And this one should have been changed when you made it before, we missed it. A majority is a challenge, because if you have a quorum of three, a majority is two. And I don't think you want two making a decision. This makes it clear, you've got to have at least three votes to make a decision.
Any other comments from the public hearing? Okay, if we don't have any other comments, we have a motion to bring it back to regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to put that to a regular meeting.
Motion made by Councilmember Fowers to return to regular meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by Councilmember Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So any other discussion on this then?
The only, one, one item on the agenda, we used to have at the beginning that if there was a conflict of interest of any agenda items, that had to be disclosed at the beginning of the meeting, so that the person that may have a conflict of interest doesn't continue on the meeting, you know, and make suggestions or recommendations or even maybe support, supportive type comments. But yet, at the end, he says, "Well, but I have a conflict of interest, so I can't vote." I would recommend, you know, as part of this, that on our agenda, that we have to state whether we have a conflict of interest on any agenda item before we ever get to that item. If not, I think something has to be filled out or something has to be done.
They could say some, so they could, if they're comments, say some, explain.
Well, we've been, we've been concerned about that before. So that would be a recommendation to apply on and put that back on the agenda, right, right to you.
And I, my thoughts on that was similar to what we expressed about, you know, we go down on her in the code and, and so it may be, it might not be. And I felt like with the integrity of the members of the city council, that probably takes care of itself when we get to those additional items. So that's what I, I thought, going along with what you, you know, said before. Because it may be, it may, it may not be. And so we really don't know until we get to that item and they discuss it. Is that a conflict of interest or is it a conflict of interest until we actually get to that item to discuss?
Well, they'll see it on there.
Yeah.
They'll definitely make, they can check themselves. I, I think the easiest way to just put it back on the...
Because otherwise, yeah, otherwise you'll be asking that for every time. If they have a conflict, then you start discussing. If they have a conflict, then you start discussing. You'd have to, they're gonna have to move first and then they can vote themselves out of that particular session.
Is that something we think?
I don't think it's a legal decision. It's up to the council whether you want it or not, you know, that's a decision problem.
So is that something we would include in this motion?
No, it's just a policy matter.
Oh, just a policy, okay. Okay. So we make a motion on these public hearings when we get rid of down. So, okay, so our next one we're going to talk about is the circle of field dirt located west of Hoover North Park. Brian has, you can explain that a little, where this is at?
Sure, so, it's, it's a pretty obvious where it's at. If you drive it down 4600, but it's just on the west side of the soccer park or the soccer field on, on the park here. Kind of that corner, that southwest corner of the park.
So this has been a concern for a number of years. Originally, this, it's been probably seven years. This, this was an asset to the city because they were working on a 4700 West project. And they brought some dirt here to be stockpiled because they had some wet dirt that they were exchanging for some dry dirt. In the meantime, it has become an exciting dirt pile that they have residents. We're, well, we'd assume maybe residents, but there's been garbage that's been dumped here. It's not safe. We've had children in the past that we've had to go out and tell them to get off of the dirt pile. Some concerns we've had in, just on safety, is that we can maybe use that ground for something else. For example, if we had that dirt pile removed, we could actually put some road meal or some browse and it could actually become a, a parking lot for those that doubt we go with, using a soccer field. Because there is some value in this field dirt. And this came to light because someone had asked about getting some field dirt. And then I was made aware that this is a surplus.
And so then we need to, and a surplus, we have to have a vote. And so we'll take it to public hearing, come back, and then we're going to make a motion on these three after we've had the public hearing. So, any discussion?
I tried, I tried.
I would have our officers go back and...
Turn the lights out.
Yeah.
Open the doors.
So do you want to have discretion on this? Before we move into the public hearing?
I tried to be nice.
Oh, they're talking about, yeah, they, so...
Okay, so what...
Is this a public hearing now?
So now we'll move it to a public hearing. And then we have to go to the action item. And then we will have, we'll go back and we'll vote on these things up above, so...
So I'm sorry, do we motion for a public hearing?
We're going to, not yet.
I want to make a motion to go to the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Say, the motion was made by Councilmember Northrup, seconded by Councilmember Fowers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we're in the public hearing. Is there any public comment on this?
What do you want to do with that material? Come on, give it away? Got it, come on.
Sorry, Lisa, this is 5438 West, 4325 South.
Please say your name one more time.
Lisa King.
King, thank you.
And that pile of dirt has been bugging me for seven years. And it's, I feel like, I hope that we can do something about that because people have started to dump garbage there and now it looks like a garbage dump. And I think that that's such an eyesore for our city. And hopefully, maybe some of that can be sold. I mean, if, if it was advertised, then there's field dirt for maybe a lesser price and they can get it somewhere else. It could be a little bit of revenue and they would holler away on their own. But that's why I came tonight, because I thought, oh my goodness, this is my opportunity to say, that looks awful, can we clean it up and make our city just look a little bit nicer? Because right now it looks pretty trashy out there, so that's why.
Okay, thank you.
I think she answered my questions, you know, what you were doing with it, if you were...
So just state your name and address, we have to have it for a public...
Paul B. Craft, 5136 South, 5725 West. I was just curious what, what your plans were. For giving the way I dubbed it. But I would think you could sell all of them.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public hearing for this? Okay, so we need to have a motion to, to return to our regular meeting from our public hearing?
A motion to return, come out of a public hearing, return to our regular meeting.
Okay, the motion, okay. The motion was made by Councilmember Rokop, seconded by Councilmember Marigoni. All in favor to return to regular meeting?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so council, yes, this is something we need to talk about, what we are going to do with this surplus of dirt. And I agree, I think this is, you know, I had someone that asked, like I said, and because there's value. But I think we could advertise and maybe sell it for less? Or do you want to give it away? One, one thing, just a, just a little side note, is I called over to Molding's to see about the possibility of us just even getting rid of the junk off of it. And it's quite pricey, their prices went up quite substantially per ton. And so, you know, we are going to have some expense getting rid of the garbage that is there on the dirt hill. But we get rid of the garbage, then we do have possibly some value? Or do we want to give it away? Or what are your thoughts on this?
So one thing, my understanding, when we bought the cell tower property, I know there's a big dip in that property. I know it was talked about to take some of that and fill it up to expand our public works. So one idea is if, if they don't need it all, maybe, maybe you could sell some to defer the cost of a tractor moving that. But if they use it all, I assume you'd try that because that was the intent, I believe. And for whatever reason, things just don't happen. Maybe now's the time, but I think we try to use it within our city first.
I think that's what I hear, because it's expensive, we have to buy it, you know.
So I did talk to...
Yeah, it is, it is an eyesore. So, but now's the time, probably use some of that.
And I did talk to Jared about that. And some of it can be used, not all of it. Because in addition to that pile, we now have accrued another pile. That's a little better. And so he said, probably some of that field could go in the bottom of where they're trying. But then they would want to fill it with this other nicer dirt that's here to the north of us.
So as part of that discussion, you know, I, I feel like we ought to get the garbage moved away, you know, from the street and put up some kind of fence or gate there or something so people can't just pull into there and dump stuff. I mean, I, I hope our citizens really wouldn't do, I hope their, our citizens aren't doing that. You know, just coming and dumping their garbage. But we would try to deter that after we get it cleaned up so that as you drive along there, it's not an eyesore to just look at garbage.
Yep. Isn't it a little, I mean, I've, I've only been over there a few times, but isn't it a little bit, down a little bit? There a little bit of dip there too?
At public works?
No, just, but where the dirt is. Is it level?
Well, the soccer field goes down.
Yeah, I mean, it's fairly level with the soccer.
Is it fairly level?
Yeah.
It felt like when I was, I had to do something over there for some project. It felt like it's dipped a little bit, but if not, I don't think.
I think maybe just to move it along, maybe give it, give it to Jared, figure out how much he needs to do his project and the remainder of it, just stockpile it for behind the public works. So get a figure from him of how much it's going to cost to move that to to utilize what he can. And then if the rest of it's, you know, unsuitable for anything, then that we can sell that for.
Sell it.
If not, stockpile it for for future projects. So he's gonna, he's probably gonna have to come up with a number of, say it's gonna cost five thousand dollars to move it, I don't know. So maybe we sell five thousand dollars worth of it to get it over there.
Upset the cost, yeah.
And that's an option.
Well, and we, and I mentioned this to Jared too, we talked about it. Um, like he said, using what they wanted and what they originally wanted to do. And if you've noticed down here, you'll see those white, they almost look like a cinder block. I don't know if you've noticed them. But the original intent was, and a lot of cities do this, is they have different, and if you look at like Sandy's and they have those different barriers or like recycled earth. So he said their original intent was to keep some of that, it just has gotten out of control. So that's what he said as well, was, you know, let's use what they need for there. Then maybe they could put those up and keep what they think they're going to use. And then we could possibly then sell the rest. Yeah. Okay, so any other discussion on this then before we make some votes? And maybe we already did on some of the others and I jumped ahead. So the first one then, we need to have a motion on Title X accessory dwelling unit review. Did we, we already made that one? Okay, so the second we need to do then is the HCC one-one-four J. And this is the voting procedures and quorum requirements with what we had a public hearing on tonight. Is there someone that wants to make a motion and that was changing the verbiage from four to three?
I'll make it.
So the appropriate motion would be, you make a motion, we draft an ordinance changing to four or three.
Okay.
And we'll do that and bring it back to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we that we change the verbiage.
Prepare an ordinance to change.
Prepare an ordinance to change the verbiage from four to three on municipal code HCC one dash one dash four J.
There's been a motion made by council member Marigoni. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second made by council member Northrup because this was done by public hearing. Any discussion on the motion before we go into roll call vote?
Okay, so all the language stays just the same.
Just the.
We're just going down through and changing the four to threes.
Yeah, only one place that I can see.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think there's, well, you'll have to look at it, but I just know. Wherever wherever there's a four, change it to three.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll go do a roll call vote. Council member Wilcox. Council member Northrup.
Aye.
Council member Marigoni.
Aye.
Council member Fowers.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so now we're down to the surplus of field dirt located west of Hooper North Park. So we need to have a motion to be able to surplus, well, you can make your motion, but we need to have a motion that if we don't need all of it in the city, we have a motion, we can surplus the additional.
Well, I would make a motion that we do not surplus any of the dirt this time. My motion would be that we do not surplus it at this time. We don't make that decision now. But as part of that motion, we do have a cleanup of the debris, you know, the garbage that's in front of it. And then let the city use it.
And if the city doesn't need it all, then where, what do you?
Well, then we'll make a decision then. See, I I don't see a point making that decision tonight.
I'll see what's needed and then make a decision.
And then we'll bring it back and.
See what we can do with the rest of it.
Right.
And would we need to have a public hearing again then on that read?
No.
Okay. Okay, so would you want to state your motion then, what you're?
Okay, my motion would be that the city does not surplus any field dirt located at the west side of Hooper City Building.
Okay. A motion was made by council member Fowers. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second was made by council member Wilcox.
Do I need to amend that to include the cleaning the garbage? But I would, then I would amend it that that, that the garbage that's gone wrong and needs to be cleaned up.
So do you want to say all the garbage on the pile exceeds quite a bit further than just the road? Do you want to just?
Clean up all the garbage around the dirt pile.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion on that motion? Okay, um, so this, because this is, was a public hearing, we need to have a roll call vote. Council member Northrup.
Aye.
Council member Marigoni.
Aye.
Council member Fowers.
Aye.
Council member Wilcox. Okay, motion carries. Okay. So we are done with our public hearings. Um, and we already did the the action items for those. So now we are down to. Yep. So now we are to the ten-five-four zoning ordinance process. And this is something that we have discussed previously with the planning commission. And then the planning commission quite extensively looked at this. It was reviewed by the planning commission and they have made the the recommendations, which was again in your packet. So any discussion on this? So as we mentioned, this is ten-five-four zoning ordinance amendments. And the whole purpose of this was, we found we had some differences in our ordinance and codes that some said where, who started the procedure as far as doing a zoning change. Was it initiated by whom? And so they wanted to make some clarification for our ordinance.
I jump again, I think there's a couple areas we need to add. It says that the next year, the city council meeting should be following public notice here. The next council meeting following public notice here.
What 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 number are you on, Bryce?
It's the very last part of A.
I'll make it up. Don't add that into what you're saying.
Yeah, I don't, the next, you know, it'd be helpful, and we might just pass this on the planning commission that when they send something that they underline new language and and leave, as is this, it's really hard for me to tell.
Talk a little bit further, they're not able to hear too far out.
Okay. It's a little hard for me to understand which parts of this are new and which parts are the old ordinance. And when we make the change, we'll have to fill in with that. It'd be easier when it comes from them to have it that way as well.
Well. So do we want to have them add that before we act on it? In other words, take.
Well, if you want to make some changes here, I'll prepare an ordinance, an ordinance form with an underline so you can see what the changes are. And then you can talk further and you may have additional changes.
Okay, that's, I think that's originally what, you know, they had and we had, they had made changes. So I think this was their last changes that they came up with was what?
This is the most current.
This is the most current changes that planning commission came up with.
Okay.
From what, but but we also have this and I could get you a copy of this was, you know, what our original was and then there was.
The original one Bryant didn't have that, this doesn't.
Yes, yes.
I'll take this one.
I can, I can figure it out. I can just go.
I'll call you.
Maybe, maybe you read my word.
Okay, so. So explain it all, I'm not sure if it's okay.
So just in one of the required filings, it just says, upon recommendation from the commission, the city council shall make full investigation at show. It says at the public hearing meeting, I think it should say at a public hearing meeting. So it's just a letter change. And then also, also there was one that says the land use map portion of the general land. So this is about modifying it in the same meeting, I think it should say in one meeting.
And what number are you on again? I'm sorry, are you on page one, page two?
On it's A, under A, and then it's five, the first five.
Now, that that raises a little issue too on C. That's presupposing if you have a public hearing at this one. You don't really need to do that. If you've got a public hearing at the planning commission, you don't need to have another public hearing here. So I don't know if, we need to have that in there.
Yeah. One. One question that I had that I wanted to discuss. So if you go on page one, so this is under A, and then you go down to three. And then it goes down to, we have all these different numbers, A, and then it's the Roman numeral two. It has that the petition is denied by the city council, the landowner may again apply for change no sooner than twelve months from their original planning commission meeting. And it, and it's listed that in three different places, on page two and on page three as well. And my question was, do we want to have a specified time? I I was just thinking of an example, like we may have someone come in, because we've had this occur and they, and the zoning is for one acre. And so it is, they want to do half acre and so it is turned down, denied by the planning commission. But what if they come back with a plan in six months or nine months? And now they've done an adjusted plan and maybe there is some one acre, there is some point seven-five with maybe two or three half acres that might be a little bit more palatable to the city. So is, and maybe then the planning commission will look at that and say, well, that might be agreeable to us.
In other words, it's a new plan.
A new plan. Mm-hmm.
It's not the same plan.
Yeah.
So maybe you just add, cannot apply for a, for the same change no sooner than twelve months.
Yes, yes, I think, I think so, if it's the same change. And another thing too.
Is that okay?
Same change?
Yeah, because they've been bringing in the.
And new plan. Mm-hmm, yep. And I don't know if anywhere in here, if it, if it gives us any leeway in case of like, for example, there is a new state suggested that we have some of these starter homes that are on smaller lots. I didn't, I don't know if it, I know the city council can always, but I don't, I didn't know if that's something that we have any leeway in this either with that, if it is something that is.
Seems to me like the old, the existing code, the old code, has a provision that says the city council can suggest changes or make changes at any time.
Yes.
That's pretty good language, so you can.
That's, that's what I agree with you. Because we did just, you know, finish the legislatures and they're not mandating anything, but there are some suggestions, so that might be. Okay, anything else?
So is that part of this now, or is that something you would add?
I'll add something. Is that what you want?
I I would think so.
Technically, you'd have that right anyway, it's just delineating the rights you already have.
Yeah.
You can change the ordinance if you want, perhaps.
Okay. Anything else that you see with this? Okay, so with that then, so you have those changes. So then we're making a a motion for you to draft an ordinance.
Form for consideration.
Yes, and then it'll come back, okay.
You can have three ordinance, that'd be a a record number of ordinance.
Okay, so is there someone that wants to make that motion?
I can. I'll make a motion that we approve the ten dash five dash four zoning ordinance putting into an ordinance form for the next council meeting.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Northrup. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by council member Marigoni. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we are to E. And this is a motion for the RFR grading and drainage plan we discussed this last month at our March seventh meeting. And Bryant has a presentation on that.
Yeah. I, they're recommending over the hubbub in the other room. So last month, we talked a little bit about this, just kind of for, kind of filling the gaps of not everyone was here, but so the Ross and Ranch, phase one, phase two, RMR and RFR are all kind of one cohesive master plan subdivision. Or four subdivisions just using one master plan. And RMR has been built, Ross and Ranch, phase one has been built. And now the developers like to move ahead with RFR. But because of, there's RFR, so you can see where that's at. And there's one master plan for the grading and drainage for all, for the subdivisions. When RMR was built, the drainage plan was not completed. And RMR lots were sold, buildings were built. And and so now it complicates that grading and drainage plan. It can't be built as it was designed. And so the developers and lot owners have been working towards an acceptable alternative to the original grading and drainage plan for the RMR section. And they've been at it for a while and we we came up with, it needs to have one cohesive grading and drainage plan for all four of those subdivisions. And the options were install the original, which is near impossible now with the existing buildings. And then the other option was to have an alternate grading and drainage plan. And this would require the multiple, or the the approval of of those involved. And so that would be the three lots of RMR as it is now. And then the future lot owners, they would be aware of that when they move in. And and so it's really just the three current RMR lot owners and then the developers. As of this morning, there is a couple issues from from one of the lot owners that they have been resolved. So the Robinsons are willing to indemnify the city and and just as if it were a regular subdivision. Also, they understand that the operation and maintenance of the private drainage line would would be that of the owners. And they also wanted kind of a little bit more direction or oversight, I guess, on on making sure that it gets constructed in a reasonable time. And they understand now that everybody wants to get this done. All the lot owners want to move on with their lives, the developers want to move on with their lives. So they are are willing to, I don't know if we scratched that from from the the contract, but just kind of move on with with making that to be as soon as possible to get it installed and then gone. So with that, we we didn't, as of right now, we don't have, so so last month, we talked about it, kind of came up with some scenarios. The lot owners and the developers have been working on it. And as of this morning, it was, I mean, we don't have anything E right now, but right before this meeting, I was able to talk to some of them and and everyone seems to be on board right now. And so we would recommend to accept the alternate grading and drainage plan as it gets signed by by everyone, which looks like it could get signed this coming week. And then we could move on with RFR, which is a feature of it. Any questions?
Okay, well, and so would be, so right now, right now, they have not signed it.
Correct.
Okay, would it be appropriate to have the Robinsons come up and just on record stake their ruling?
My my concern with the city is that, you know, as, I wouldn't want to bring any liability onto the city with us like approving something that they haven't signed and agreed to. So my question is, is there a way that we could somehow agree to do this after it's signed?
Sure.
Because we've, we've, we've.
You can have a condition of approval.
We've, we've made it this far before and then all of a sudden, nothing really got done. And so what did you say?
You just make a condition of your approval? You approve the new plan on the condition you get all the signatures.
Is a verbal commitment as strong as a signature? No, okay.
Okay.
That way you're saying then, we could make the motion to approve it on condition that everything is signed. So it wouldn't have to come back before another city council meeting. So as long as they come in and sign that, then it would be approved.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on that then? Is there someone then that's willing to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, ex- accept the alternate plan, accept the alternate GND plan.
Grading and draining.
Grading, grading and draining plans upon, um, upon, I can't think of the word now. Upon condition of, of approval by both parties.
All signed.
Signed, approved by both parties.
All signed, yes.
Signed. All gladly second that.
Okay, so we have a motion made by council member Marigoni, the second was made by council member Wilcox. There's actually four, so.
Well, and this is.
Four that need to sign that, so do we need to, have you?
How, how many need to sign?
There, there's three residents, developers and the city, so five.
Upon approval of, upon.
All, all needed signatures.
Everybody.
Yes, all needed signatures.
Upon, upon condition of everyone that needs to sign, sign.
Okay.
And, and again, just to, because this was a point in question, this is going to change where this drainage actually occurs. It's going to be a backyard kind of drainage. So the city does not require an easement, but we will, we would have no liability if that ever plugs to get, to have to go back in the backyard of landscape, and I'm trying to make a point here. They come in, they landscape all their yard, and then their drainage plugs, and then they come to the city. We can say we have no liability whatsoever to go back in and dig up their landscape to correct that, to get their drain flowing again, is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, so are we still fine with the motion and the second? Okay, so, um, any other?
May, may I ask a question, pick him up, can I just ask him? There's just no, no assurance of any timeline on this motion, as there be a timeline may with this motion.
Do you, do we? Oh, a timeline to have it signed, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, yes, we can do a timeline.
Sure.
Well, again, the thirty day timeline.
Like a week.
This one should just be within the next.
One, Monday or?
One of the parties looks out of state. Or is frequently out of state.
How much?
He can get his son with his spouse tomorrow.
Yes.
And then he is traveling in town over the weekend, so I believe early next week, we likely should get our.
So, so.
I just don't know if we can find.
So should, should we say by next Thursday, because the office isn't open next Friday, so next Thursday?
Okay, I'll redo the motion.
Let's amend, let's amend.
Okay, we'll amend it, okay. I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the recommendation to, um, the alternate grading and drainage plan as far as, upon, upon approval of all parties involved signing the documents within seven days.
Okay, a motion has been made by council member Marigoni, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, the second was made by council member Wilcox, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, um, so Bryant has something along with our next one as well.
Okay, so as, as far as that goes also, so if you remember, uh, RFR was kind of dependent on the grading and drainage for the area for, uh, the RMR. And as we were looking at this, the RFR was approved for development in March of twenty twenty, no, twenty twenty-two, sorry, and the developers agreement was signed in twenty twenty-two. And in our, so there's, there's a snippet of the developers agreement, so you can see April twenty-first. And in the developers agreement, they have two years to, to complete their development. Uh, if not, then they need to come and ask for an extension, so as you're aware, we're, we're not quite done with RMR, and we're moving ahead now with the, the alternate drainage plan as of next, uh, Thursday, so with that, then that would allow RFR to move ahead. But we need to amend our, a developers agreement and give them an extension so that they, they can, uh, do that. So here, here again, you can see there's where RFR fits in. And so the developers agreement expires, uh, the end, the end of this month, and we don't have another meeting until next month. And the development can begin once the alternate drainage grading plan is approved for RMR, so there's kind of a condition there. But good faith, that'll happen next Thursday, by next Thursday. RFR did receive final approval, so the options are extend the developers agreement for one year, or you can deny the extension and require them to begin the subdivision process anew. Just pointed out this, that it, the subdivision is vested where it has gone through all the approvals. And so that would really just be a paper uh, exercise, uh, and it'd take probably three to four months, uh, which would be just time wasted for everyone, so with that, we recommend extending the developers agreement for another year.
Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, so can we have a motion then to ex- do?
I'll make the motion to extend the developers agreement for the RFR subdivision, um, for one year from now, from, to April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Northrup, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Bryce, Bryce seconded.
Okay, second is made by council member Wilcox, is there any discussion on the, on the motion? Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Bryant also has the next one.
Okay, so with that, we haven't really noticed, but with the RMR, they were approved for development in two thousand eighteen. Again, their developers agreement was signed in September fourth, uh, two thousand eighteen, and they also had a two-year completion. Uh, note that this went through the COVID time, so things were a little bit kind of crazy there. Um, and then there's the, the issue with the RMR not being able to complete their, their grading and drainage plan. And because they had been making progress, uh, the city didn't really, was kind of off everyone's radar. You can see this is a request for them to enter their, their one, their one-year warranty. And everything was passed off from Hooper Irrigation, Taylor West Weaver, uh, Central Weaver, what was denied, or the, the denial to enter the free warranty, uh, was because the grading and drainage plan was not installed per the design. So you can see, most everything is completed in this, it's just the, the grading and drainage plan. So here we, again, we have, it expired in twenty twenty, the city did not notice because progress was, was moving along. And then RMR did receive their final approval, so just like RFR, uh, you could extend the developers agreement for one year. I don't know what that really means, where it's expired, but, and, or we can deny it, the extension, and require them to begin the subdivision process anew. Again, the subdivision was vested, and it was ninety-eight percent completed, and so again, we'd say that is going to be a waste of, of four months. So we would recommend an extension. Uh, the question is, do you extend it a year from September fourth, uh, to this year, or to twenty twenty-five, or do you do it a year from now? But with the, the verbal, it's going to get, uh, RMR is going to get, uh, signed and eat by next Thursday. Maybe you don't need a full year extension, so, um, recommendations to allow an extension, and then you guys can pick which one of those best suits this.
Okay, any discussion on this? Okay, would someone like to make a motion on this then?
Well, um, I would make a motion that we extend that through September fourth of twenty twenty-four. For RMR.
Okay, the motion has been made by council member Fowers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second made by council member Marigoni, any discussion on the motion?
So, now, so what's, do they need it, do they need it till April twenty, twenty-five? They need that, or?
Can they, can they get it down in that timeframe, so that they do it yet?
Hopefully not, we're, we're hoping that it'll be eaten by next Thursday, and.
All right, so if that's sufficient, that's good.
Sixty to ninety days, it'll be done, that's the idea.
All right.
Any other discussion on the motion then? Okay, um, all in favor on the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so then the last thing, we discussed this last meeting, but we did not have a motion. And so I think, and we just talked about the names that needed, we had, I believe there was six names that needed to be added to our veteran monument down at the park. And so we need to have a motion made to go ahead and add those names. We had money in the budget, we talked about that, we weren't going to charge anyone to have their names put on there, we just need to have that motion made to go ahead and have those names put on our monument.
I'll make a motion that we add those, is it six veterans names?
I believe it was six, I could be wrong now, but I think it was six.
Seven, we'll just say the names that are.
I can just say current list.
Missing current list names to the, uh, for the park monument, to be added.
Okay, their motion made by council member Wilcox, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Who, who wants to do the second? You both.
Council member Northrup.
Okay.
Okay.
Council member Northrup made the second, any discussion on the motion?
Just one other thing, we did agree, just to make it clear, we agreed not to charge for those names.
That the money, the money was donated for those names to be.
Well, we had, but, we had, we have money in the budget, but.
But I added in the budget. But there was also money donated for.
So wait for Mr. Northrup.
To continue the monuments.
Yes, yes. Okay, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the last thing on our agenda then is public comments. Does anyone have any public comments? They would like, okay.
Garth Hubbard, fifty-one, fifty-six south, fifty-seven, twenty-five west. You know, uh, just a question, uh, do we have a recourse or a, anything, if, we've been here before, and, and so if, if this sub- somehow falls apart, what's our recourse, or what's the next step? Um, we, we, you know, we've been here before with no ballpark, we thought we had an agreement, so um, I would propose that, uh, we be allowed to, this, this, I don't know if you have a, one that shows the drain process. By the way, we even have a direct line from the big two-foot by two-foot boxes, uh, to the Robinson's yard, and then the other people have the, the, the drains that go out, so they literally have two of their own drains for this. But, uh, I would propose that if, for some reason, this falls apart and we can't get a signature, the other two are, are lots owners are, are, have been in agreement for some time, that, uh, we be allowed to, uh, proceed with a three-drain version. We've, we have, uh, and, and proceed without having to touch Robinson's yard. It's more than enough ample drainage, and, and if we can make this work, I'm happy. But if not, I would like to have a, uh, and then we just go ahead and sign the, sign the agreement with the, the city, who has to approve and adjudicate and govern and, uh, all of, all of the, all of the above on, on any development project anyway. So, um, I would propose that as a, an option or another option, uh, to, of, of recourse if by some, you know, lightning strike, this doesn't, doesn't, uh, isn't finished by then.
Okay, thank you. Is there? Is there any other public comments? Okay, any advice on that?
Well, I was just thinking, we've already made the motion that it's only good if the signatures are done within the next seven days, and if it's not happening, then that motion can't, is no longer approved. So that means we start with one.
So we need to, uh, what's next, like, yes.
I think you want to see what happens.
Okay, well.
Because we have to start.
You can't put the seven-day limit on yourself, it would have been more open if you hadn't, honestly. I don't, I don't know what they did, but.
Would you, would you mind coming up to the microphone and stating your name and address and comments?
Uh, Dylan Robinson, thirty-two, twenty-three south. Um, the seven-day limit isn't necessary, and it actually ends up limiting them more. So I don't know why they did that, but, that's essentially.
It was necessary because you said that there was somebody out of town that needed to sign it, so we gave you a couple more extra days.
Well, I'm just saying, putting a time limit on it made it so that it expired and not, that it was until it's signed, but, that's all I'm saying.
But then that could.
But we're planning on signing it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, your intent is to sign it.
The intent is to sign it as, essentially, as soon as we get a notary.
Okay, and there is a, a notary here.
But I will only be here on Monday.
Only on Monday, and she won't be here Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
You need another notary.
There's also.
Hooper wire has two notaries also.
Yes.
Every credit.
Yes, every credit, yes, okay, thank you.
Kenny Hubbard, fifty-one, fifty-six south, fifty-seven, twenty-five west. You just heard him say his intent was to sign it. I do not trust them, we've done this for two years, I do not trust they're going to sign it. And, and if they don't sign it by, in one week, then are you, it's like, it didn't happen again. And we have to come back another month, and then get you to approve the drainage plan again, is what it sounds like. So is the drainage plan a- approved, or is it only if they sign?
The, the motion was made that the drainage plan was approved on the condition that all parties signed.
So if he doesn't sign, then we're back to square one. I don't trust him.
Teresa, do you need a notary tonight?
Can I make a comment?
Sure, yes, yes, this is the public comment section, so.
Janice Robinson, thirty-two, twenty-three south, fifty-one, twenty-five west. So I guess a, a suggestion would be, um, this, so the current, um, plan that we are okay signing, um, is with a four-drain, uh, Garth had mentioned that there is a three-drain option that doesn't touch our property, so could it be that, you know, you guys have already approved this with the condition that it's signed? Could it then be that they bring it up in May of their next meeting, if it hasn't been signed, then you approve their three-drain plan? I don't thi- I don't believe that it'll be a problem, I believe that we can get this signed. Um, the person in, um, whose wife is, lives out of state, she's signing it, uh, they have an appointment tomorrow to get it signed. He's coming in on the weekend, and I believe we can get it signed early next week with all parties. I've been in communication with all the, um, all of the neighbors this week, and I think, I think we can get it done, I think it's kind of a good point, but that is a kind of a consideration for the next month with their three-drain plan, if this somehow doesn't get signed.
Okay.
Can they sign it tonight?
Yeah, can, can you, yeah, do you want to sign it tonight?
That's it.
Here's to it.
Yes, I always have it.
Yes.
As long as I'm in Seattle.
Yes, yes.
I don't carry it with me on my person all the time, but if I'm in the city building, I have it.
Okay, that sounds great. Any other public comments?
As long as they're not hiding their distress, because that's against notary rule. The town won't stand and watch them, because that's distress, because don't think you can do that.
As long as you don't take my blood pressure, I'm, then.
Yeah, just saying, they have to sign with not in distress.
There is one page that asks for everybody's signature, and they had at one point asked that they'd all be on that same one page. So that's some of why we were requesting that till next week, so the party out of state can sign it, bring that form that they have signed, and then we can have that one paperwork everybody has what signatures on.
Are we okay, Bryant, with having that separate page, and then we'll have the others sign? Okay, yes, we can go ahead and do that this evening then. Okay, any other public comments?
Does that change anything that we, does that change our motion somewhat?
No.
No. No, it doesn't.
It'll just wrap, I, whatever.
Any other public comments? Okay, if we don't have any other public comments, thank you all so much for coming. Can we have a motion made then to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion was made by council member Marigoni, seconded by council member Fowers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda?